So tonight is sort of marks the, I guess I'll call it the halfway mark of the budget process. For the last couple of months, department heads have been busy preparing their proposals. And then having those reviewed by me and Andrea in particular. And then a couple of you have sat in on some of the larger budgets to help get to this preliminary stage. So this marks the presentation of a preliminary budget to you. It's a work in progress over the course of the next couple of months, January and February principally. We'll be working with all of you to fine tune it and to craft a final budget proposal that then gets presented to the voters at the annual town meeting. So there'll be lots of time for input of view individually and from the public in general. Over the course of the next 10, 12 weeks, we work to finalize this budget. So again, I want to thank the department heads for all the good work that they've done so far. Special thanks to Andrea Mainville, Town Accountant, who has worked very hard to put the book together and is really our front person on working the online software system that we have. The booklet will be available online through a portal so that anyone in the public can review the materials. And you can as well. So I gave you those links that you can use. And there'll be a link on the town website for folks that they can click on as well to dive into this. It's a thick book. It's over 200 pages long, so there's a lot of information, a lot of detail. We're not going to go over every page tonight. I'll let you read through it at your leisure over the course of the next few weeks. But I do want to spend just a little bit of time highlighting a few things, as is our tradition, and spend most of the time really talking about sort of the three big issues that are before us as we finalize this budget. So again, just to emphasize, we do have the Clarigo Budgeting Software that we started last year. We're utilizing that again this year. You know, it makes it much easier for department heads to input their data as well as for us to review it. It makes it easily available to the public. So we'll continue to use that and fine tune it as we use it year after year. I'd like to start off with sort of the big picture. What's the 60,000-foot view, if you will, in terms of the budget? And so as a preliminary budget, it stands at a $40.5 million total expenditure. That's all-inclusive, schools to enterprise funds to community preservation funds. And so you see here a breakdown of what comprises that $40.5. About half of that is the regional school district and the vocational school district. That's the biggest slice of the pie. And then town operations, capital. Capital expenditures are up significantly in this proposed budget, tapping into our reserve funds to continue a pretty aggressive effort to catch up on a lot of deferred capital. We'll get into that as we go along. Debt payments and capital exclusions, the enterprise funds, that's the water and sewer, meaning that they are not funded by taxes but are funded by the fees that we charge for those two services. Your community preservation projects, that's a surcharge on the tax rate that pays for that. And then some state matching funds that comes in. And then there are various state assessments that we're obligated to pay. And then we have what's called the OPEB or other post-employment benefits. Essentially, retiree health insurance, a liability that we are putting money aside so that we close out that liability in another 10 years or so. Tax abatements, we set aside dollars each year for potential abatements to property taxes that are appealed. So overall, a $40.5 million amount. Lot of assumptions that are behind those numbers and they'll get into some of those. I'm not going to go into this very busy slide, but I do like to just remind people, just give them a sense of some of the various services that that $40 million is purchasing. I don't have stats on the school side. This is town side. But obviously, a lot of different aspects of municipal services, from water and sewer to plowing roads, to trash collection, tax bills that are issued and collected, excise taxes, et cetera, et cetera. Van rides for seniors, books, take it out at the library, videos, parking rec programming. So there's really a wide array of services that we're providing through the municipality. And this just gives you a flavor of what some of those services look like. So like I say, every budget is based on a number of assumptions and various goals. So a primary assumption is that the citizens want the services that they're currently getting. So this budget assumes basically level delivery of those services. And we make the assumption that taxpayers are willing to have their taxes go up 2.5% in order to pay for the continuation of those services. The, another assumption is that we level fund exclusion. So we have your debt exclusions for capital. We also have annual capital exclusions. And what we have been doing over the last several years is as debt is retired, we replace it with a similar amount of capital exclusion so that the total amount of exclusion remains the same. So that keeps the tax level level in terms of the exclusions. So that's the good news. The bad news is that we're not dropping taxes as that debt is retired because we're repurposing those dollars to help pay for capital. But that has been effective for us in terms of putting more money into capital and catching up on that deferred capital that we have. Which is my next line about continuing that aggressive funding. This FY24 budget does assume some additional funding from different grants. We have some remaining ARPA money, if you remember. The town received about $2 million in ARPA money. And that is being spent, the remainder that would be spent in this budget. So some of the goals that we hope to achieve is adjusting to some higher demands that we're seeing from some of the departments, particularly in public safety. And we've spent a good chunk of our time talking about that over the next few months. We will be mapping out long-term facility needs and talk about some projections over the 20 years for what those facility needs might look like and some dollar assignments to those needs. And of course, we want to continue to maintain our strong fiscal condition. And the town does remain in good fiscal shape. Our fund balance is healthy, we enjoy AAA rating. And we continue to do that. And this budget assumes that we continue along those same lines as well.
Greg, can I ask a question about a couple of things on this slide?
Yeah.
So assumptions, it's great that we have assumptions and that the budget is based on these assumptions. My question is, how do we validate some of these assumptions, specifically the top two?
So I think the best validation of that is what voters decide at town meeting. So they ultimately make that choice. And the other validation is through citizen response to the services that we provide.
So on the, what I'm poking at really is, in any service organization, when you have a lot of services, there are typically some that are underutilized. I equate it to cleaning out the closet, you know? You, if you ever go into your closet once a year and clean stuff up, there's always something at the back. You're like, oh man, I forgot that I had that, you know? And running a service organization has similar challenges. There's always something somewhere that, I'll just use the phrase, underutilized, that I guess I wouldn't assume that if we brought it forward to the citizens, they might not agree to do something different. And so I just, I'm not sure where we're having those conversations, if it's in some of the workshops and, you know, do I need to start attending? If I want more detail, is that where I should attend? So, you know, service organizations, they gather clutter over time. And so I'm just trying to understand how we, how we attach that.
So I think our frontline assessment takes place with these two boards. So that's really, not that we wouldn't listen to citizens, but the Finance Committee and the Select Board really are the leaders of that assessment.
And just the reason why I'm poking at it is, I do think this is a bit of a different year because of the unusually high inflation rate. We haven't seen inflation rates like that in quite a long time. So I'm not 100% comfortable with just using the assumptions, you know, from last year. So that's what I'm just, and I'm new to the process right here, so I'm just trying to poke at. Should we look at some things a little bit differently, you know, due to the macroeconomic situation we're all in?
Right. I mean, clearly we are in a uncertain period, right now. We are experiencing high inflation. We don't know where that's going to go next. Is that going to continue? Are we going to drop into a recession? There's a lot of speculation and a lot of unknowns there. So I agree with you that this is a time for probably extra scrutiny.
I might follow up on Kathy's comment there. We don't proactively ask a lot of questions. Kind of, we move it along and we see that people are satisfied. I would say a lot of the things that are on the agenda tonight, we're going to find out in April whether people are okay with whatever these decisions are. Because we've got some perhaps difficult decisions to make and we'll find out what people have to think. But I think for a lot of those questions, we're just, hey, things are going along pretty well, so people must be happy. But until you take something away, you don't know. And so we'll, we'll see.
Can I just add one on top of those two? I'm actually personally fine with the number one assumption that citizens want the current levels of services. I think, I think that's a reasonable assumption. Obviously, we'll find out for sure. But my, again, keeping it 30,000 foot, I just have a bit of a tough time reconciling that with, I'm going to call it the higher requests from some departments. Do you know what I mean? In other words, if everybody's happy with the current level of services, then, you know, it doesn't make sense to me that certain departments should have these huge additional requests, right? Just to maintain the current level of services. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I hear what you're saying. And I think the debate we will have is whether those departments can continue to provide the same level of services at the same staffing that they have. That's going to be the question.
Sure, fair enough.
Based on what they perceive as higher demand for one reason or another.
Okay.
So that, but yes, that's the discussion we need to have.
Sure.
One other thought, and again, I think it just looks back at the pattern of the last number of years. We spend a lot of time going through all of this, a lot of time. And a lot of soul searching about, do people want this? Do people want that? And then I'm always blown away at town meeting that we will go through a $40 million budget in about 17 minutes. Boom, just gone. And everybody says, well, you already looked at it. I guess that's good enough. Let's get to dogs on the beach or something else. So expectations that we get a lot of feedback at town meeting, I don't know. We always talk about it, but it doesn't always happen.
And that's not unusual to Manchester. Exact same conversations in the town I used to live in, exact same conversations. But I just think, once again, we haven't seen these levels of inflation in quite a long. So I'm just trying to be a little proactive and having maybe some different conversations. And when we go through the rest of your presentation, Greg, I think my key feedbacks, I actually went through all these pages in the past three hours. What we tell here in this book is a spending story. We need to tell a financial story. And I think your team is doing a lot of good work generating savings by making some decisions, okay? And we're not reflecting that at all in this documentation. So when we, I think we can talk more about that as we go through the process. But we, we need to tell an entire financial story, not just a spending story. Because then people will think that's all we do. And I do think your team is finding ways to save money in some areas that can offset increases in other areas. But you have to work really hard to see that.
That's a great point. I mean, if only to, you know, show proper credit where credit's due, right?
Right, exactly. I mean, even like a simple financial waterfall chart. I mean, it's a great visual that shows, you know, last year's budget was this. You've got your puts and takes, and this is how we got to FY24. It's a really simple visual that allows you to take credit for the savings that you, your team has generated, some decisions this board has made has generated savings, significant savings for the town. And I don't see that in here, and I want to see that in here, you know? I think we owe it to, you know, all the people who are working hard on some of those projects to reflect the, you know, the hard work that they're doing.
Anne, you wanted to say something?
I wanted to say the fact that they passed our budget in 17 and 1/2 minutes is feedback. And it underscores both of the top assumptions, right? It's not just that they're confident in us. They look at it and say, yes, that's what I want.
Yeah, to that point, people that show up to town meeting are informed. To that point, the people that do show up to town meeting are the ones who are involved. How's that? Informed.
The 17 minutes correlates to bullet point number two, in my opinion. In other words, if it went over 2.5, it wouldn't go down in 17 minutes.
Well, last year we went over 2.5 and it, there were no problems. We were 3.2% last year.
There was no override. So that's, that's really what I'm pushing on. We hear language, so some of us attended the school committee meeting last night, right? We hear language about overrides, which I don't like that language coming from another organization, presuming that any town should have an override. So I have a fundamental problem with that conversation. But if we are anticipating some very large expenses, which we are, right? It can help us over time to get ahead of that by try to generate as many savings as we can now to build that, you know, reserve bucket for the things we're going to need over time, right? So we're in a, when you're in a good financial position, now's the time to look even harder to generate some savings so that we can continue to maintain. And I'm not saying change the service levels. I'm saying deliver them differently, right? And those are the conversations I hope we have over the next couple of months. Because it is going to be really tough.
I think the other thing you need to remember is we do have 3.5% in excess levy capacity.
Understand?
In two years, so we did increase the taxes.
I second the comment. I, I don't think the word override should be used towards the town, right? Like, I mean, we have many different levers that we could pull. And I'm not suggesting we would or should pull any of those different levers. But to me, it's more they have a dollar per quest and then it's up to us, right? To figure out how to, like, for example, your slide before mentioned 4.6 million in capital, right? It's a big number. That's 1.6 higher than we normally. I mean, just to pick one example, we could cut that to 4 million, you know what I mean? If that extra six went, you know? I'm not saying that's what we would do. I'm just saying that's one of many levers. That's all.
That, that number is larger based on dipping into reserve. So it's not as, it's not as sin extreme of revenue. But I understand the point.
I'm coming at the point of the word override. And it's just more that we have all these levers that we can use and, you know.
So how we talk about things as we're, because this is all preliminary and we're just getting started. I think what we're saying is, let's not presume an end state until we get to that end state. Let's, you know, look at the facts, go through the process, but, you know, try to keep our language neutral so that we, we can pull whatever lever we feel we need to, to get to a good end state for the town.
What do you mean when you say keep our, keep it neutral, our wording neutral?
For example, the mention of the word override, that's an example of not being neutral. It's presuming that this town or any other town would, would have to have a proposition, 2.5 override in order to fund certain things. And I don't think that's a...
But is it presuming or just, I mean, I'm...
I think, I think the first step is to come up with the needed expenditure. And then you figure out how you're going to fund those expenditures.
Exactly, exactly. And one of the funding mechanisms, though, can also be delivering the service differently at a reduced cost from the way you're doing it today. Because the, I think where people get confused is, level services does not mean you spend the exact same dollar amount, you know? Or even increasing it, because you can deliver services differently and do it less expensively and have the same level or greater level of service. So I just want to make sure we're having, you know, the team, Greg, is having those conversations about how to innovate and deliver some of the services differently, give the residents the same or better service, but at potentially a reduced cost.
And I think we do try to discuss that in the FinCon meetings.
Right. And it's just, like I said, that's, that's not coming across in the documentation. So I'm wondering where I can get...
It's in the FinCon meetings where we go into all the details.
So that's where I should be attending.
Yeah. That's when we dive into the individual budgets and question things. This is just a review.
Yep.
Whatever, how she call it now?
We have a lot of time in front of us, so.
So just was putting up the five major goals that the Select Board has been working on and will continue to work on. So it's helpful to have those goals in mind as we look at the budget to make sure that we're supporting, supporting the goals. So more discussion to cover on those goals as well. So the basic challenges that I'm seeing, front and center, will be, what's the right size for staffing and services for public safety? So all three departments, police, fire, and harbor. Police and fire are the larger two. Harbor is a much smaller department. Three comprising our public safety operations. And they, as I indicated earlier, we're all three would like to increase their staffing. So that is a sort of a front and center discussion that we'll, we'll need to have and some decisions will be needed. Capital needs, again, remain a large challenge for us as we look long-term in particular. We're exceeding our goal of the 3 million, which was a target we established a few years ago. We're able to do that because of, again, that strategy of, as debt retires, replacing it with exclusion money, capital exclusion money. But we've also been putting more dollars, general tax dollars, into, into the capital line as well as dollars from our enterprises. So both water and sewer contributing more to capital than they have in the past.
Quick question on that? It's just, it's the one and only blank I see here, the actual for the capital. Is that curious?
What are you talking about, Mike?
Page 21, the balanced budget summary, you know, it shows budgeted and actual for past couple of years. And the only blanks is on the capital improvements. Not the budgeted, but the actual, so this is...
This is the operating budget, I mean.
But there's a row for capital improvements, I mean.
Yeah, probably because the actual spend is a timing issue, so it's a tough number to...
So I would argue that, I would argue there's two numbers then, right? You would show, in my opinion, you'd show actual cash out the door. And then you'd have another number that would be...
What's been committed but not split up, yeah.
Due to the time.
Yeah. Yeah, we can show this.
Okay.
You had indicated that it was going to be a little bit over what was budgeted, though, right?
Yeah, you're saying we're exceeding.
The other thing that would be really helpful in this is to let us know what the expected reserves are after the spend.
Yeah, because...
Because the reserves page doesn't show that. There's estimated fiscal year '23, but it is no estimate for fiscal year '24.
Yeah, yeah. So back to the capital needs in terms of, you know, the sort of the year-to-year capital, we're doing well. And that we see continually, it's the big ticket items that we're the challenge to respond to. So the Essex Elementary School, for example. At one point, there was hope that we could wait until the high school was paid off. Substitute that debt for Essex Elementary. There's real pressure to move that forward, do it sooner, you know, in the next four, five years. So that, that's a big ticket item that will be a challenge to and sore. Some of the bigger ticket items on the, on the town side, for example, the DPW facility, whether we upgrade what we have at the Pleasant Street site or build new, either there or some other site. In a couple of years, we will have retired some additional debt. And if, assuming that the new research lab, CST, goes forward, that would bring in a significant new revenue stream. That could, in theory, help pay for such a, such a facility. And then looking further out, if you can, and this is the timing issue. If we can wait on some of these bigger ticket items until the '33, '34 timeframe, 10, 10 years from now, eight, 10 years from now, we will have fully funded our retiree liabilities, both on the pension and the health insurance. And that frees up significant money to the tune of, close to $2 million a year. So, so timing is, is a major factor here in terms of how we can respond to and handle some of these big ticket items. So that is obviously a continuing discussion that we have every year. And has been alluded to already, school district challenges, both on capital and operating. And they, in recent years, they have been relying on reserves to fund operating. That is not a sustainable model. And so the question becomes, you know, I have the word override in there.
That's an example of the non-neutral language that I would like to no longer see. Because it just perpetuates a conversation we don't need to have.
So likely request for a significant higher increase than we have seen in the last few years. And so that presents a real challenge. So the preliminary budget does not show that higher increase. It shows the standard, roughly, it's been the 3.5% annual increase because of the enrollment pattern changes currently with Essex's enrollment relative to ours increasing. That 3.5 really translates to another 2.5% increase for us, which it did last year.
When I look at the preliminary school budget, if you take the increase in operating and deduct the decrease in debt, the total increase from Manchester is only 3.31% of the 2023 budget.
If you subtract out the debt payment?
The decrease, the decrease in debt.
Basically, if you put that debt payment into operating, it comes close to covering the requested.
I'm saying that the increase we have to pay only comes in at 3.31%, according to what is here. So it's not that much higher. The operating's 4.4... The Manchester...
Are you looking at their request or are you looking at...
I'm looking at their tentative budget summary. In Manchester, the operating was up 5.35, but the capital was down 7.4. And if you add the numbers together and divide it by the fiscal year '23 budget, the net increase for Manchester is only 3.31%.
If you net that out, yes.
Yeah. So that's not asking for a lot more, is what I'm saying, than normal.
If you shift, again, if you take what was debt dollars and put it into operating, then you can, you can...
But it's our outlay. It's what we have to pay.
At the end of the day, at the end of the day, they're coming over with a cash request, right? Like, I mean, the total dollar... Total dollar request, and if Sarah's numbers are right, I mean, cash is cash, so you can add, you can put all that together and it sounds like Sarah's saying it's an increase of three point three percent.
So the net is not as big as the request, cause we have something to net it out, is what you're saying.
Right.
So the, the, the challenge that, that is part of that equation, and again, we're getting into the weeds a bit here, is that, that debt payment was an excluded debt payment. So as that debt drops, the amount that's excludable drops and our taxation ability drops. So that's just, we just have to factor that in.
Yeah.
So it's not a straight net?
It's not a stra-, right.
Okay.
It's not a, it's tied to go one to one.
Got it. Different color of money.
So, again, this is just a high-level view of, of new revenues that are anticipated in order to balance the preliminary budget. So it does assume that two and a half percent increase in taxes, just under seven hundred thousand. It does assume, um, new growth, new construction, about twenty million dollars worth of, of new growth, which has been our average over the last few years. So that brings in two hundred thousand dollars in new taxation. A very small increase on local receipts, we have some room there that, um, if we, if we needed to. So our local receipts at, at a base level of two point six, that is below what we have actually brought in over the last few years. That number is, that actual number is closer to three million.
And where's the ARPA money?
Uh, the ARPA money I don't show here. So it's, it's a, it's sort of a, a side note on the capital. I don't show it in either, in either the expenses. I don't show it as an expense and I don't show it as a, as a revenue.
So, so just, just for example, on, on the local receipts, right? There's four hundred grand roughly, right?
Yeah.
Cause last year's actual is three million using two sixes.
Yeah.
So even if you cut it in half, right, like you didn't wanna go for the full, four hundred.
Right.
I mean, there's an easy two hundred.
There is.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, you know, in the context of the school request, i- if they were asking for, you know, an extra two hundred, it's, it's there.
It's there.
It's not even hard.
Right, but there are other, um, requests that'll be coming in that we'll need to balance.
Sure.
So, um, um, this, this preliminary budget assumes a two and a half percent increase on wages. So the union contracts are, are still underway. And again, the discussions about staffing levels and public safety.
I, I think the, the question is, um, we know we have a lot of opportunity for spending. People are coming at us and, and asking for our money, and like you said, we've got contracts to negotiate. The estimating that we're doing on the growth and the receipts, are we being too conservative? What's the wiggle room in those, in those numbers? Because, you know, obviously you wanna, you, you, your estimates are never gonna be a hundred percent, but are we being overly conservative and, and, um, in, in the estimating?
Well, it's been a perennial discussion that we've had.
We've been rationing around that for the past couple of years.
We've been inching it up, probably slower than what's many around the table feel we should do. And, um.
Well, given the current climate, I think we'd wanna stay as, as conservative as we can.
Well, so there's, there's, you never wanna be over budget, okay? But you never wanna be too far under budget either, cause that erodes the, um, confidence in, in the overall budgeting process if you come in too far under budget. You, you, there's, there's like a wiggle room here, you know, a, um, a, a range, right, you wanna be in.
I think one of the.
Sure the finance people can articulate what that range should be.
So the target has been a ten percent for the fund balance. And we, over the last number of years, we've been over that target. We've been up as high as fifteen percent, maybe sixteen percent.
So that's what I was gonna ask, actually, was one of the charts that was in here, there was, um, a nice trend chart and I, I didn't see a target, so I didn't know what good looked like. So are you saying that for your estimates, plus or minus ten percent is what you're targeting for your reserve or your, okay?
Yes, yeah.
And, and we've been.
And you've gotta understand, before that chart started.
Right.
We were down at five percent, right, Maureen? I think when I came onto the FinCom, we were at five percent reserves or something like that. So we made it a considered effort to increase.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not talking about.
Then it went too high.
So what I'm really talking about is the, when you're doing your estimating, when, when you have an estimate, cause that's what these are. What does good look like? How close do you wanna be at the, when we, when we take a look at the numbers next year at the end, how close do we wanna be to what we actually spent? What does good look like? I guess I'm asking the financial folks.
Could you maybe say that, that we actually just go through the, the presentation and then rather than just, and, and if we can submit questions?
Well, we, we need to, this, I, I don't, I don't have two minutes more slides, this, we'll, we'll get through this and then. So, um, just over two million in, in monies to put towards expenses, higher expenses. So where would that, how would that two million get spent? So obviously the, the big outlier here is the capital. And that is drawing, um, primarily from, um, the reserve fund to, to allow such a large capital. The only reason why it's so big this year is, is in order to keep moving on some water pipe replacement projects. And inflation has hit those projects pretty hard. And so in order to keep making that progress, um, we're, we're recommending a pretty big drawdown on the reserve for this one time. It will slow down in, in the years ahead, but it, um, to get us over this one hump, we're recommending this bigger drawdown.
So I presume when we meet with DPW, they'll be giving us exactly which projects.
Yes.
Intending to do to get to that money.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The three, four, I'm trying to reconcile that with, I thought it was four point six on one of the early slides.
This is the base, this is what it was this current year.
Got it, I add.
And then I'm adding one point two. Yeah, I've got about four point six, yeah.
Greg, can I just ask you a question? The, um, Central Street Dam, seems like that's got a timeline that we may not be in control of. And grant funding, the, is that figured into this or what's your thought process on that? Cause my recollection is that could be a big delta here.
Yeah, it could be, so, um, um, short version is that we, we're about halfway there with the grants. We have a couple more that we're waiting for, and hopefully we'll, we'll know in another month or maybe eight weeks. And it, um, realistically won't start construction until the fall of twenty-four. So it'll hit the FY twenty-five budget if we are short.
Okay. So we may, we may be able to ride through it this year?
Yes. So you can see, um, you know, salaries, health, pension, um, you know, basically, uh, staffing costs. Or the, the three, um, if you exclude the capital on, on the town side. And then the school district, um, again, showing the smaller request at that two and a half percent for us, um, three and a half overall. So that's, that's where the, that two million would go, how it would contribute.
Is, uh, the title on that said for twenty twenty-two?
Nope, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, should be twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Yeah.
Start all over again.
So the key changes in, in the proposed budget, um, like I say, most, um, most services and staffing remain at, at the current levels. Again, those three possible exceptions that we will be talking about. Our recent trend, whoops, our recent trends in, uh, not having high health insurance costs is, is going out the window this year. Medical trends are in the eight to twelve percent range. We seem to be doing pretty well, our current, um, spend rate is, is, has been lower than those trends. So I'm, I'm hoping that we will get, get by with an eight percent increase, um, in the health insurance costs on the premiums. We, we, we have a definitive number on pension for next year, and that's increasing four percent. Obviously, energy costs are a bit of a wild card. Supply costs certainly have gone up as well, particularly for DPW. Chemicals for water and sewer have gone up significantly. We'll see that in the water and sewer budgets. And, uh, and then obviously, I mentioned the capital expenditure is a major change from, from the current year.
That, that eight percent on health insurance, that ties on the previous slide, I think it was like a hundred and six thousand.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I guess my point is like, it's good to look at both percentage and absolute dollars, right? Like, like you see eight percent and you're like, holy cow, eight percent. But then it's a hundred and six grand, which within the context of a forty million dollar budget is, yeah.
Yeah, good to put in, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Good. Um, this might be just passed, but I thought the pension fund required a seven percent increase.
That was the projections year over year.
Yeah.
Um, I was surprised that we came in lower, um, this year. I haven't gotten to the bottom as to why, I'm almost afraid to poke too hard, but anyways. It's, uh, it, it's a complicated formula in terms of our percentage of the grand total. So if, if other communities have, have grown their salaries more.
Okay.
Then, then we will, we will benefit from that, because we are, we're a smaller percent of the total. So that might be what's at play here.
Just, just because, even though it's ancient history, I remember in the two thousand, um, market crash, our, our estimated date for fully funding the pensions went from twenty-eight to thirty-four.
Yes, that's correct, good, good memory. Yes.
So, um.
Oh, but this date's already given us this number for this year. I, it's what he said.
Right.
So this is definite for this, this is definite for this year, but, yeah, it's just one of them.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, not gonna guarantee you that four percent next year.
But, but one of the things I think to point out on the pension side is, and I, I recall this from every year meeting, can't remember his name, the guy's from Wakefield, the external audit firm that comes in.
Sherman.
He always points out, like.
We're way ahead of that.
In terms of percentage, obviously we're not a hundred percent fully funded, but we are like in the upper, I don't know, five, ten percent of.
For, for OPEP, most definitely. Um, our pension is, you know, we're part of the county system. They're, they're, they're doing fine, they're, they're top of the line, and they're not at the bottom of the heap.
Okay. I'm probably mixing up.
But, but OPEP, yeah, we, we are definitely, um, unusual in how far along we are in our open. You know, the town made that decision quite a few years ago to start that, and that was a wise decision. So, so that, so we will benefit from that decision for sure. I think I talked, talked through this already, um, about the capital plan. And, uh, talked about, you know, early thirty, when we do free up dollars. And the real challenge is, is figuring out how we can time our projects with, when we expect those revenues to be available in order to avoid large new, um, debt exclusions that basically result into a pretty large tax increase.
I, I, I'm confused as to how you're saying you're dipping further into reserves when the estimated reserves at the end of fiscal year twenty-three are nine point two percent. Are you going lower than that?
For twenty-four, we would dip lower than that.
Lower than nine point two, so it'll go considerably under our target?
Well, um.
No, um, can I, can I say, can you hear me? This is Andrea. Can you hear me? Um, I just wanna say the chart on there for the reserve fund for the nine point two percent, I'm actually taking out what is being spent from, um, reserves through this budget.
Okay.
For, for twenty-three.
So that does include the.
So that'll be like our starting bounds, probably twenty-four. So it's already included in there.
Okay, thank you, Andrea.
Yes, it does, yeah.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's helpful.
I don't follow, I'm sorry, what?
So on page twenty-three.
Yep. The nine point two.
The nine point two already takes into account that larger drawdown in twenty-four.
Got it, got it. That's assuming pulling.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, got you.
Okay.
Got it.
Good, makes me feel better.
Thank you, Andrea. Please, please jump in at any time to help us out.
I'm sorry, can you hear me? I have no tech problems tonight, so, blah.
Yeah, no, you're, you're coming through fine.
Okay, good.
So we'll, we will spend a fair amount of time on capital as we go forward. So just, again, I, I'd just like to include this to say, what, what does this all mean for, for homeowner? So I have both the mean and the median, a pretty big difference in the two, in terms of value. Using our current tax rate, um, ten forty-three, which just got approved, um, last week from the state. So, um, a person who, who has an average house of one point four million, they're paying around just over fourteen thousand. Now, two and a half percent increase is another three hundred and sixty dollars that they need to pay. If you're in the median at that middle point, just over nine hundred thousand of, of value, you're paying nine and a half, nine, ninety-five hundred and a, a two hundred and forty dollar increase. And then below, I just put down, um, averages statewide. And how that compares to what we're paying. Again, it's just a little bit of a, um, touching base of what, how we compare, what, what, what these dollars mean to, to a homeowner. So going forward, what, the key decisions, um, we've, we've talked about this, I've got that override word in there.
Learned fast, though.
So, staffing for the, for the public safety, um, we'll have union negotiations that hopefully will give us a better sense in another couple of months. So we may need to do some adjusting there. And then what, what decisions are made for, for the school district going forward?
What, um, so Greg, what about, cause you mentioned capital is what we're gonna be spending a lot of time talking about. The facilities master plan, will we see that, a draft of that before we complete this year's budget cycle?
It's gonna be tight, it's gonna be tight.
Cause we have those conversations on big ticket items without that, at least a draft plan, even if it's not perfect, you know?
We definitely need to review the draft before it's finalized.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We'll certainly have some, more information than we do have now. It's, it's, it's gotten off to a slow start, so we need to try to move that along.
Well, what's the timeline on the union negotiation wages?
I, I'd always like to have it done by.
I know, you, you don't know exactly, but.
So it just depends.
All right, so, but that's kinda tight with regard to the due date here.
Yes.
Okay, of, of all of these, it's the tightest.
Yes.
Because it's also the biggest variable in terms of controlling that timeline.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, budgets are about choices, uh, what we want to provide in terms, so what services? What, what's the appropriate size of staffing and departments, and what are the best delivery models of those services? Are there different models that we should be pursuing, whether they be in-house on our own, shared services with neighbors? Or again, as Kathy indicated, is there something in that closet that we're not using that we, that is, that doesn't have a high value, but we continue to provide? And then what about the funding sources? What kind of commercial growth can, do we want, if any? I should have taken out that tax, we do have the, uh, room tax coming in, that's a, a new one that's starting. I need to take that out, it's no longer new.
When, when?
It just started last month.
Literally last month?
Yeah, yeah.
And, so do you even ask, what is it?
You know, it's just really hard to predict, we just, we don't have a good sense of how many, um, medium-term rental, you know, short, short, medium-term rental.
What are we using for, somehow, some way, you're using some number or not? Did we estimate zero and just?
Yeah, I don't, uh, we haven't even put it in the estimated receipts yet.
Okay.
Is it, is it twenty thousand, is it a hundred thousand? It's, it's really hard to tell.
Okay. How much is the tax gonna be?
It's a free, I think it's three and a half, three or three and a half.
Percent?
Percent.
It's paid by the three hundred and twenty.
So we get, we get the money from like Airbnb or?
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, it's the state that collects it.
The state collects it, and then they cut us a check. So it's. So it's, it's, um, it really hands off for us.
And we'll get them once a month?
Uh, once a quarter.
Once a quarter. So first check will come until?
Probably February. So, back, back steps here.
Genuine.
Middle January.
As I say, this is sort of a, uh, yeah, yeah, midpoint, and this is more public process now. Prior to this point, it was really department head working, um, internally. And now we have the preliminary budget that is, is out on the street and for you to dive in and, and to go through with the fine, fine tooth comb. So now it'll take us through January and February, need to finalize it, um, in early March, in preparation for the, the first Monday in April for the annual town meeting. So you have, uh, you have the books, you also have it available online. And, you know, please go through them and, and please, some of your questions, and we'll, we'll get more information. And to outline, um, meeting dates and what departments you'd like to have come in, at what time, and what, which, which dates. Typically, we would target the first FinCom meeting in January just to, so to do the overview. We're a little deeper than what we've done tonight, but what are, that we have seen as the big issues and, and sort of strategy you'd like to undertake.
Yeah, I was hoping that the second week in Janu- January, the second Thursday in January, we could deal, have the public, uh, safety people come in.
Yep.
Since that's a big item. The first Thursday, we'd just do the overview and then have the public safety come in that next week. We have room five, I believe, for our meetings.
I believe so.
Yeah, I think that was just.
The second Thursday in February is what?
January.
January.
I thought it would be good to do that really early.
Do it more than once. I will say that that second Thursday, that's the night of the zoning of the overlay districts, the three A. Three A, that's, um, kind of being, it's a presentation.
Well, we have FinCom meetings every single Thursday. And that was scheduled through the town calendar. And we're only gonna have about eight meetings this year. So we have to push really fast.
Well, I think this is, I think this one, it's, it's in my, my calendar is six to seven. So your meetings usually start at seven?
We start at seven, yeah, yeah.
Right. I just, I, I think that, you know, we need that something that most of us should try to attend, but.
That's the twelfth?
Yeah.
I think it's the twelfth, correct? January twelfth?
January twelfth, yeah.
Yep.
So Greg, just on, and Sarah, just for the, the FinCom meetings, is this where, um, especially for these big, you know, difficult discussions we're gonna have, do we have a set, set of towns that we benchmark against? And?
The fire chief gave us something from fire towns, I believe the police chief is doing something for some towns.
So like each department head kind of, do they kinda do their own thing?
And Andrea, Andrea has some information.
I know, yeah, Andrea, I talked with Andrea, and I remember you said you had some great benchmarking information, is, is that something that?
I'll ask her for.
Okay, we forget, cause I think that's gonna be important.
There's, there's a good, there's, sorry, there's a good one on fire from, I know it's six years ago, but it's on, um.
No, but the police chief did something very recently, which is very eye-opening.
Okay, but I'm just saying on fire.
I mean, fire chief, very eye-opening. Much more accurate than that long ago one.
Yeah.
Really? Well, I wouldn't say accurate, but more updated, right?
Detailed.
I mean, I would argue the one six years ago is accurate as of then.
Yeah.
And the school committee does benchmark for other towns.
I, I'd see in the, in the materials we get at town meeting, the school committee presentation has a lot of benchmarks in there that I find very helpful. And for the town presentation this year, personally, I'd like to see more of that because I think that helps with our goal of improving transparency and explains the why and, um. I was just curious as to whether, cause I know the benchmarking is being done, but I was curious as to whether each department head kind of picks their own towns or whether there's some, you know, top ten list that everybody does the same towns, or I just wasn't sure.
We do have a standard list, but the department heads tend to look at others in addition.
That's fine, yeah.
And it varies, cause like Harbor, right, it's different towns.
Absolutely, yeah.
For sure. In terms of the public safety, I think, I think there's a special meeting that was, that talks about just staffing. Is, is, would be appropriate.
Yes.
But have all three in together?
Three, yes, together.
Yes, and do that on the twelfth.
So focus on staffing rather than just the.
Yep.
Overall budget for us.
That's fine.
And we'll shoot start at seven on that one?
Yep. We have too many people working possible to get here, maybe four, seven.
Maybe seven thirty-three or seven.
No, seven we like.
Select board isn't everyone that works.
Don't sell yourself short.
I, I show up, I don't work, I show up.
So that's what I had for the budget. The other topic that was on tap for tonight was to talk about, um, you know, the second rig, to repair or buy new or, or do a different option. So I presented some summary materials, we have Chief Clary is, is on, um, on the Zoom call here. Certainly divide, um, the overview, which that would be helpful, if you tell me what you'd like to, to do just up. So just to frame it up a little bit, um, we currently have the frontline ambulance, it's, um, three, three years old now. And obviously doing, doing fine, it's a good rig. The, the old ambulance, um, is twelve, twelve years old, I think. And, uh, needs a new motor, not a minimal. And you'd receive an estimate to replace that motor, eighteen to twenty thousand. The, the motor replacement, put a new, new motor in it. Additional work needed on the rig to make it, um, roadworthy and ready to provide emergency services. So another twelve, twenty thousand for the motor, another seven thousand or so, uh, putting the radio, radios back in and restocking it all.
Why, why was all the equipment pulled out of that if it hadn't been declared surplus yet?
It had to be cleared surplus.
Okay, okay.
I, as far as the age, how about mileage? Like, what is the mileage on the new one and the old one? Does that, yeah, usually you have it.
Chief, did you hear that? Do you know the miles?
I believe it's somewhere around sixty-five thousand miles on the old one. And I would have to double check, I think I did send in new miles at one point, but, um, I don't have that number right in front of me.
So, um, the, the different options, to summarize, but go ahead.
Can I just ask a technical que- or a mechanical question? The designation is surplus. I know we have to vote on dispensing surplus, but defining surplus, how does that happen? Because, um, I mean, we could define this building as surplus if it wasn't organized. I'm just curious how that determination was made or what the process is.
I mean, we never knew what was pulled out of service.
Yeah.
So it was, um, the, the chief brought that request to declare surplus to the, to the select board. I, I don't remember that date exactly, it was within the last year and a half ago, or maybe, I forget, maybe, maybe less than that.
Yeah, less than that.
Yeah, it was.
Months, yeah, this board.
Yeah, it was with this board, it was recent.
With the two year.
We were here, it was one on the panel for five months.
We haven't been using it since that was defined as surplus.
No, we have.
So it hasn't been used for the last almost two years now because of its inoperability. There was a number of efforts to, you know, repair, efforts to try to keep it going and, um, and those efforts weren't successful, so we stopped. So again, for all the context, you know, uh, the chief can speak to this. We tend to have a range of sixty simultaneous ambulance calls, um, a year. So, you know, averaging a little more than one a week. So if, if, if Army doesn't respond, then we run mutual aid with neighboring communities and private services, um, that provide that. So that, that's what has been happening in the better part of the last two years.
But only half of them are transports, right? I thought that half of the calls were transport.
Those, how, how many of those calls are actual transports, do you?
Uh, most of them are transports. Most of the, of the secondary calls that the out-of-town ambulance have come for have been transports. There's been very few refusals at that level. Because if, if they were gonna be a refusal, we would cancel them before they got here, and most of the time, they got here in transport.
But, but are I correct that half the calls result in transports?
In total.
In total.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the statistics, but that's probably close, I'd have to look at the actual numbers.
But yeah, it would make sense that you would turn back, uh.
Right.
Mutual aid call if, if someone's refusing.
Right, yeah.
And, and how much revenue is involved in those, half of the calls resulting in transport?
Well, we usually bring in somewhere, and, and Andrea can speak to this as well, our overall ambulance transports in the course of a year, the billing comes in approximately two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars in revenue that we collect from our ambulance transports.
And how are those fees determined? Do we set them?
They go into a hospital or something?
Insurance, but.
Um, they're, they're based on a scale in the area.
Yeah.
Uh, we are at the higher end of what we charge in, in comparison to the other local services.
Cause I, I've heard there's a trend of more people refusing ambulances because they don't cover, the insurances don't cover more of a percentage. And so if, if it's higher than what the insurance covers, I was wondering how that's set. So it's, it's based on the average of the area. Okay.
Uh, yeah, the different services set their own fees based on what it is. And then we get, we have a, a billing company that then continually sends out, and they can be reported to the credit. So whatever, whatever is still outstanding, then the company continues to bill them and gives them the opportunity to pay off over time, whatever wasn't covered by insurance.
And have we done a study on how, how mu- how, what it costs, like for the depreciation and labor versus the fees? Uh, uh, do we lose money whenever we have an ambulance call, or do we make money? Do we know?
Um, I, I don't have a metric for that, I have not calculated that. I mean, the challenge with that is that, that if you're trying to figure out personnel, both personnel are also cross-trained as firefighters. So it's not an exclusive all or nothing, whether they go on an ambulance call because they're still available to provide a firefighting service and a rescue service as well.
Yeah, it may be imperfect, but it's a, it's a valid question to ask, you have a service that drives revenue, you wanna understand if you're making or losing money on the service.
Good.
Right.
Just, just as a rule, just, just the rule, public safety isn't in the market as, as a business.
Right, understand.
It, it's more like insurance, that we're there for the emergencies, and it, it's not usually quantified as to how much it costs us to run the service versus how much to make it. It's paying for us to be available to handle those emergencies. So a public service looks at it much differently than a business.
Well, we made it, Tom, let's ask the question.
The requirement for mutual aid, is that just because of the equipment, or is that also staffing?
Staffing as well.
Staffing as well, for sure.
Not just talking about replacing the ambulance, we're also talking about.
No, we're only talking about replacing the ambulance.
Yeah, just the ambulance.
But there's a, there's a correlation.
There's a correlation, so what I wanted to say was, you know, from a business standpoint, it seems to me, and this is information, I'm a rookie here, so forgive the ignorance if I have some here. My understanding is that Essex has, um, a situation where they go on ambulance calls, the revenue goes into a separate fund. That fund turns over every five years, and they buy their new ambulance with that, and they do that.
Yes, enterprise fund, yes.
So that's the way they do that.
Correct.
I also understand that we are one of two communities, I think, that have advanced life support, is that correct?
Uh, well, we run advanced life support, Gloucester does.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Uh, Linfield does, Middleton does.
So just from a business.
On top field does.
But that's a, that's, that's a hot point in town.
Okay.
It's very difficult to get rid of ALS.
Well, no, what I'm trying to say is, if we're, if we're one of a few communities that have that capability, wouldn't we wanna try to drive it more as a, a business entity and create revenue from that?
We're losing so much money.
I mean, just, just.
And then, what is it time, please?
It's not a business.
Just, just to build on that, I mean, I'm, I know this is dated, the report from six years ago, but as of that point in time, it was the data, right? And, you know, when I look at the revenue line, I see a town like Middleton that I know just came up, and they were pulling in basically twice as much. Now, maybe that's because they got two times as many ambulance, you know, I don't know, but even Cohasset was double us. And Cohasset really doesn't like us, right? Both in terms of population.
No, no, they're, they're double our size. Not double, but.
And, and it has been.
But I guess, I guess my point is just, those two towns are pulling in a lot more, and I just would be curious to why. Maybe there's an easy answer, I don't, you know, but.
Can I offer a suggestion on that? We're running one ambulance at, for the last two years. Like, we knew how much we were taking in three years ago, when we were running two ambulances, we might have a better answer.
We could compare that.
Cause the.
You have to adjust for.
I thought ambulance two brought in about between thirty and forty thousand.
How much it cost to operate ambulance two?
I, I would have to go back and look at that because it really hasn't been in service since I, since I've gotten here. It was already out of service, it was not viable.
I'm not arguing that it's not viable, I'm trying to find out, perhaps from Andrea, what, whether there was a significant drop in revenue when we lost the second ambulance. And the other thing that I would like to say is that we have been touting our ambulance service to the town. We say we will have somebody that, there in about five minutes. That's true when we have an ambulance that's here and staffed. It is not true when we have to call in, um, an outside service. It's, and five minutes is an interesting number. Because at seven minutes or ten minutes, you're dead, under some circumstances.
It's a valid point, and, and I think the conversation around the numbers is really just, we, we owe it to the town to understand the entire financial picture around this particular very important service, okay? Cause the town has, this is something we all hear from the residents, they want the in-house ambulance, right? But that doesn't mean we shouldn't have a solid understanding of whether it's generating revenue, how much revenue it's generating, and, in order for us to make these very expensive financial decisions about when to replace this very important infrastructure. So I think we're just kinda saying, we need a little more data, Andrea probably has it, and I think we'd like to see it.
The, the other.
Just.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
The, the exact numbers are, are not gonna be materially different than some good estimates. So we're bringing in, let's say we're bringing in a good year, three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Of revenue on six hundred calls. That's five hundred a call.
So we're bringing in five hundred?
So if you make, if you, if you make, uh, sixty calls, that, that five hundred, that's, that's thirty thousand. So, again, that's not gonna be exact, but that's gonna be in the ballpark.
Okay, and the average, the, the average billing for advanced life support transport is thirty-two hundred dollars.
Right, that's not all, that's, that's not what we're bringing in.
No, I'm just saying that's what we, that's what the charge is, that we're at the upper end of what we charge for our ALS service.
Right, and not every call is an ALS call.
Right, what's a non-ALS bill?
You know, not ALS calls are significantly lower.
Like half of them?
Two thousand, twenty-five hundred? Two thousand, twenty-five hundred.
So, Greg, are you saying we net five hundred per call?
Yeah.
And we're talking with, the second ambulance is going to be in service potentially just once a week.
The numbers aren't making sense to me. If we're making thirty-two hundred per call, and we do six hundred calls, that math doesn't work. So, either we're collecting on half of our calls.
So, that's, that's really why we.
We're collecting about ninety, eighty-five to ninety percent of our calls.
There you go. So, the numbers that we're hearing are not jiving. And so, we, I think we'd like a little bit of an overview around this.
I'm not understanding something here.
I know our annual income from the ambulance is between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
And there's six hundred, six hundred calls a year, and if you go and you don't do anything, and you leave.
There's no charge.
There's no charge. And I think the estimate was only half of those is there a transport. So, six hundred, you've got three hundred events where you're charging some money. And you've got three hundred thousand bucks, that's pretty easy math. So, it's a thousand dollars a shot.
I can get you some more. Some of the transports that we do are out of town when we go mutual aid, and we're transporting patients from other towns as well. A couple, a couple of things that I need to say. First of all, having the second ambulance and being able to run it is directly related to staffing. And as far as being able to transport, because we need two people on it in order to transport a patient. With shift staffing of three, when two are out of town on the primary ambulance, we do not often have enough people in the station to run that ambulance and transport. So, we respond and start the primary care and need to call another ambulance that has two people to actually do the transport. The second value of a spare ambulance is when something happens to our ambulance, or it needs to go out of service for maintenance. For example, we had a small accident with the mirror, the driver's side mirror on our ambulance. And it was going to be a month before we could get it into a dealership to get it fixed. So, we were able to cobble the mirror together in the short term. But after about a couple days of running it that way, it was unsafe to operate the ambulance, because the firefighters could not see in that mirror to pull out into traffic and had a couple of near misses. So, we had to take the ambulance out of service. It was out of service four or five days before we could get it repaired. And in that time, we had to rely exclusively on mutual aid. Had it been a more serious accident or more serious damage, we would have been without any ambulance for a longer period of time.
Well, what, how did they, what was the accident?
It was just a mirror-to-mirror driving on the road. It was, it was driver training on a very tight road up on forest, and a pickup truck came the other way. And it was a narrow part of the road. And it was just a mirror-to-mirror accident. But something as small as that took our ambulance out of service for four days, and we didn't have a reserve. And that's the other function of a spare ambulance, is a reserve. We have, our ambulance has to go in for a factory recalls coming up very soon. And we don't have a spare to replace it when it goes out of service. So, these are additional concerns of the value of a second ambulance, not just to be available if we have sufficient staffing to run second ambulance calls.
So, at this point, though, you're saying, okay, so if we get the second ambulance, that, that, then unless you have more staffing, the second ambulance is simply backup?
Yes.
Would you send an ambulance out with one person?
No.
Okay, because that would eliminate transport, but that doesn't necessarily eliminate treatment.
No, but we have the ability to treat, and we, looking at converting one of our vehicles into an ALS non-transporting ambulance.
Would that go out with one person? Would that go out with one person?
That would go out with one person.
That's informative.
So, that would be a stopgap to waiting for the second ambulance. If we ordered and purchased the second one, that would give us increased capability, but still wouldn't give us secondary transport capability.
Understood. Which happens half the time.
Thirty thousand.
Well, half, half, sixty calls.
Half, half.
Sixty percent, sixty calls, sixty to seventy calls a year, we have simultaneous calls, but the ambulance can only go to one of them. And then the other one, we rely on mutual aid.
So, back on the conversation about the buy or repair decision we're confronting here. Because I haven't heard anybody say that we don't want two ambulances, so, so I'm just focusing on the discussion here. If, so it's the ambulance in question that's out of service, it has roughly sixty-ish thousand miles on it. Is there any rust or, you know, is it, if, I guess what I'm asking is, if we make a repair to it, which that would give us a second ambulance pretty fast, what would its useful life then be? Because sixty thousand is nothing, you know? That's, that's pretty light when it comes to mileage, right?
Especially for vehicles indoors.
I'm sorry?
It's getting, it would, it needs a new motor, so that's what's replacing.
Okay.
Well, it needs a new motor in it, it needs a new stretcher system.
Well, let's talk about the motor, just, I mean, just the vehicle itself for a second.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it could be viable with a new motor. He said it had a lot of bad codes, that's the primary reason it was taken out of service, because the motor could not be fixed to make it reliable. And that's what we're really looking for, a reliable second ambulance.
Right, so I guess from my perspective, because I've never given away a car that's less than a hundred and fifty thousand miles, you know, so I'm one of those that pushes the limit here a little bit. So, I'm trying to understand, replacing the motor, okay?
Yes.
Then when would we need to replace the ambulance? What's, how long do we extend its useful life for, roughly?
So, what had happened to this, is this ambulance ran ten years first due. And which is way too long for it to run first due. It should have been put in reserve sooner and then rotated in for a couple of years. And that's why I instituted trying to get the ambulance on the factory recommended, or the industry recommended five-year replacement plan.
Okay, but it's not, it's not answering my question, chief. Chief, I just have a really specific question. If we invest some, let's say ninety-three, whatever, some dollars to replace the motor, all those other parts that these vehicles have, you know, to get it in the best possible running shape it can be, then how long are we extending its life for? Is it five years? Is it three years? Is it?
Well, I think the expectation is.
What is the expectation?
The expectation is if you're going to replace ambulance number one on a seven-year cycle, then that is three years old now. So, four years from now, you wouldn't need.
That's really not my question. My question is, the vehicle that we're talking about potentially replacing.
We're talking about getting four years out of it, based on this rotation. That's, that's what the presumption is.
Okay, so if we do a repair, we can get it back on track, so we can do the.
Or we modify the squad engine.
Or the squad engine, okay.
You don't need another staff member to run it.
Right, right.
And this doesn't cost you much, but you still.
But the goal is still to replace ambulance one every five years, and then move that into a reserve status. So, we know.
Or seven. If you look at the repair record, it makes no sense to replace them every five years.
Right.
Or seven.
I've heard that ambulance useful life is about two hundred and fifty thousand miles. Do you agree with that? I mean, I've read it in a couple of places.
I, I don't, some services have, some services have to get that much miles out of their vehicles, especially you see that in private services, you do not see that in fire-based EMS. I'm not aware of fire departments that run ambulances over a hundred thousand miles, unless there's some critical shortage or something, and that's why you're seeing a lot of people running them now, because of the two years wait for new ambulances.
Do we?
So, you can't not run them if they need them.
Do we have the history on how frequently we replaced all of our prior ambulances?
Very good question.
No. There was no plan to replace them, and that's why we're in this situation that we are.
I'm not asking for a plan, I'm asking what we actually do in reality.
I would think the town would have that.
I only have them going back to one ambulance ago, and that was probably a two thousand, I believe. So, they ran that for ten years before they bought the current ambulance two, which is our spare, and then ran that for ten years.
I thought we were on a ten-year cycle.
Andy, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking about, you know, to me, it seems kind of, how do you have a conversation about a backup ambulance that then demands that you have four people staffed at any given moment, when you don't actually have that staffing? And, well, I understand, you know, it's, it's a critical service, just like, you know, the pump trucks and the ladder trucks are critical services, but we don't have backups for those, so I.
We do, but we should, maybe not the ladder, but we need one for the engine. The squad is not a sufficient backup for the engine, and we run into the same problem.
To answer your question, the way I look at it, the only point is, like the chief said, you would spend twenty grand, let's just say, on a new engine for ambulance two.
Yeah.
But the only value you're getting out of that is when ambulance one needs to get a mirror fixed or an oil change. At least you've got, that, that's, that's the only value. You wouldn't, to your point, you wouldn't be able to run two concurrently.
We're not running two ambulances.
The only, the only way we would do that is if we had, if on a call, we had somebody else come back on recall, because the ambulance was out on a call, and somebody came back off duty, which occasionally they do. It's not a high number of times, but there are times when we end up with two people still in the station to handle a second call.
The question I have is, we've gone, gone two years now with one ambulance.
Yes.
Was there, are we still hitting those five to eight-minute, what's the, what's the timeframes on those?
Response time?
Vehicle, there's a word, response time.
When we have the ambulance staffed, it's certainly making it to the call. If we have two people on duty, and the ambulance goes out of town, then nobody is in the station to respond to the second call. And you usually get one of the Manchester police officers responding, and dispatch calls mutual aid ambulance. If we have three on duty, then the person remaining at the station responds and starts care and waits for a mutual aid ambulance. With the current draw on mutual aid ambulances in Essex County and nationwide, it can be fifteen to twenty minutes for the actual transporting ambulance to arrive.
Greg, I have a suggestion. It seems to me that if a second ambulance requires staffing, that we should wait and decide what to do with the ambulance until we've had the staffing discussion. Does that make sense?
You can certainly do.
Unless you want to talk about it truly as a true backup, like, you know, you spend the twenty grand, it's just sitting there so when the mirror gets fixed or the floor is changed.
Or is it cheaper to modify the squad?
Right, or, right. Like, what, what are the dollars to modify the squad?
The dollar to modify the squad is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of five to, five thousand to seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, the number we have here is sixty-two to seventy-two thousand per year.
See, I don't understand, yeah, I wasn't understanding those annual dollars.
That would, Greg could probably speak to those.
That's based on an assumption that a new ambulance is four hundred and thirty to five hundred thousand, that's the range. So, if it's, if it's a five-year cycle, so, and number one, each, the two ambulances, total cost of eight hundred and sixty to a million, over ten years, amortized eighty-six to a hundred thousand a year. And number two, stretched it over fourteen years. So, that same figure, eight hundred and sixty to a million, amortized over fourteen years. That gives you your sixty-two to seventy-two thousand per year. Number three, we only have one ambulance lasting seven years. So, that's why I have that sixty-two to seventy-two.
So, I'm not saying that that math isn't good for certain kind of accounting depreciation, but from a pure cash, you know, pure now standpoint, it sounds like the answer is five grand to seventy-five hundred.
That's a separate number.
And then we're not, we're not painting ourselves into a corner.
Yeah, that's it.
Hey, one person at a time, so that the people who are transcribing can do so, please.
Okay, what I, what I just said was that if we go with modifying the squad, we don't paint ourselves into a corner.
Right.
As far as staffing goes.
There doesn't seem to be a downside to repairing the squad, getting something in service ASAP that can benefit the town. And we could still debate what we do about the ambulance when we have the staffing discussion, but I just don't see a downside to.
Especially since the dollars are so short.
Would the squad, the squad or the repair and the ambulance?
I'm just talking on the squad. It's, it's a cheap option to get something in service for our residents ASAP.
Do we have a timeframe, how long would it take to?
Like, could it fit a stretcher? Could a squad car fit the stretcher?
No, it's not for transport.
So, no, no transport.
You don't, you don't have to spend that much.
Just to go.
All it is, is sending a paramedic with the paramedic supplies to initiate treatment quickly.
So, the five to seven grand is just putting paramedic equipment in the squad?
Yeah, it's casinetry and shelving and air conditioning and the compartmentization we need to convert the squad from being more of a firefighting apparatus, more of an EMS vehicle.
So, in terms of time it would take to get that done, it sounds like very short.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to have the custom cabinets made, we'd have to have it sent it out, have it fitted, things like that.
What is the timeframe?
I, I don't know, I would have to get estimates. I don't know what the companies, there are several different companies. We probably have to see who had the better deal, how far we needed to take it. There are several different companies that, that do those type of conversions.
What is the squad car, is that an SUV, what is it?
No.
No, it's a, it's a mini pumper. The challenge, the challenge with that is it doesn't really function well as a mini pumper for us, and primarily, all it does is follow the ambulance, the calls, now.
It's going out anyway.
It's going anyway.
Well, yeah, it was going anyway. The other thing was, and, and this is another option, is because our, I, I don't want to get off the ambulance topic, but as part of a larger vehicle staffing, our frontline engine is twelve years old. It's the perfect time for it to go in reserve and get a new frontline engine. We do have an offer from a fire apparatus broker to purchase our squad, so that that money could be used towards purchasing a new frontline engine. Because right now, the squad is supposed to be a spare to our frontline engine, but it, it doesn't compare, it's not even close in comparisons with respect to capabilities that we need.
So, may I ask, oh, excuse me, so if we convert the squad, so we can get an EMT?
A paramedic.
A paramedic, a paramedic.
One paramedic.
One paramedic, and he can start, okay, until a, a mutual aid.
Mutual aid ambulance, yes.
Okay, so we're not compromising, well, a little bit, but we're not, we're stabilizing the patient until the ambulance gets there, which is most important.
I mean, we go and stabilize the patient now, we just can't do it at the ALS level. But this would allow us to do it at the advanced life support level.
And we're foregoing any opportunity for revenue on a transport.
Correct.
What is the offer for the squad at this point?
A hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And what would a replacement first-line engine be?
Seven hundred thousand.
Okay.
But, but consider, but.
That was a short conversation.
No, no, what you need to consider, we have one point one million dollars in the fire apparatus replacement fund, that's specifically to replace an engine, or an ambulance, or both. And that's why that fund has been built up for times like this. If the town doesn't have the, the interest in a lease purchase or anything like that, and to buy it outright, that's where that one point one million dollars would go, to a new ambulance and a new frontline engine.
I don't see it in the capital plan that's been submitted to us. I'm just going to ask, is that in the capital plan?
It's not in the capital plan, because I've been trying to get some feedback as to the appetite for my replacement plan. So, I didn't put it in the capital, because there are other capital needs, I know, that we have to do that don't require this much discussion. But I have submitted a couple different apparatus replacement plans with the explanation of which apparatus, which year, and for which reason.
So, let me ask you this.
Yes.
If we look at the sale of the squad car, squad vehicle, engine, and that money going.
He wasn't talking about selling the squad, he was talking about selling engine number one. He wasn't talking about selling the squad, he was talking about selling engine number one.
No, no.
No, selling the squad.
Oh, squad, oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So if you're talking about selling squad for a hundred and twenty thousand.
Seventy-five, seventy-five.
One seventy-five, thank you.
Yep.
Then, and then you repair the old rig, including the new striker lift, for sixty-two to seven, uh, no, about ninety-five, I think it was. We get about four more years out of that. Can you still run that as, with one person as you would do the squad engine? So it's a non, but, but functioning as a non-transport, uh, if it's a backup?
No, because it'd be licensed as a transporting ambulance and would require two EMTs to run it.
So you.
So when you say EMTs, could it, can it be an EMT and a paramedic?
Yes, it could.
So it could be a police officer?
Police officer.
Police officer.
Yeah, I mean, that gets into cross-staffing and pulling them off their job again, which I'd want to explore with the police chief. I know that was done in the past.
But that's.
That's an option.
Becky, your, your comment is an interesting one, is that you sell the squad, you're, which is already perhaps not appropriate, we gather some revenue from that. You get the ambulance up as a functioning transporting backup piece of equipment that when the mirror falls off the first one or whatever else happens, you have the second one to use. And we maybe get four years out of that and deflect a four hundred K purchase. When you look at all that, that kind of makes an awful lot of sense.
It does.
So we just put four hundred thousand dollars back in the coffers?
Well, we can, I mean, we voted on it, so the question is, does that go to reserves or what does that happen to?
It's not that appropriate.
Trickledown.
Goes back to the fuck.
Okay.
Goes back to the vehicle fund.
I'd just throw one thing on top of that. We don't know, I don't know, none of, I don't, maybe some, someone knows the timing of all that, but like, let's just say that the timing of, you know, selling the squad and all that stuff is more, I don't know, call it medium termish, just, right? It sounds to me like in the really short term, given the small dollars, you'd still.
Fix the ambulance.
No, no, throw the five grand into the squad, just so that.
But then the person might know when to buy it.
That's a good question, though. If we, if we throw the short money to upgrade the squad, can we still sell it for the one seventy-five, or does that negate the interest from the other party?
I, I think, I think I'm within a month of when their offer for the squad expires. They gave me a six-month offer, a six-month window of selling the squad for a hundred and seventy-five thousand based on the miles and the condition it was in when I sent them the information. But it's coming very close to the expiration of that offer. And I don't know if they would want it if we modified it in any way.
If we modify it, how many more years do you get out of the squad if it's modified?
Oh, let's see, is it? Another, well, another fifteen, but it's not serving the function that it was purchased for.
Understood. I miss a long time.
Wouldn't, I personally wouldn't keep it another fifteen. It, it doesn't do nearly what it needs to do as a backup for engine one, so I would always be looking to offload it in order to get another full-size engine.
So that, that vehicle wasn't purchased as a backup to engine one? We had a different philosophy with a different chief?
Right.
Well, from what I've heard, it, it was designed to be both a mini pumper and a brush truck, and it is not viable as a brush truck. So it never served that particular function. And it never really runs other than to chase the ambulance, because it's not an equivalent to engine one when engine one's out of service, and we don't have enough on-duty staffing to run it in conjunction with the other engine to make it viable in that respect.
So why isn't it going after the ambulance?
It does not serve a, a really good function.
Oh, let's not go there. Yeah, that's a good question.
Uh, yeah, I mean, so.
It's, it's a third person to help, but.
In an entire different vehicle, for what?
But allows them to get back to another call.
Today, there was an ambulance that went by Bridge Street and the, the, the engine one was behind it.
Is it because you can't put three in the one vehicle? So you need a two-in-one, or, or the flexibility?
The flexibility.
It's the flexibility for that other person to break off with a second call of the other emergency.
That's.
Can we make a decision?
I would, I would give some serious consideration to selling the squad, taking the revenue from the squad, banking it for other stuff, fixing the second ambulance as a backup and deflecting, spending four hundred K on a new ambulance as for as long as we can.
Yep, I, I, that's, that's where I'm leaning toward.
The second ambulance could be transported with a police officer?
Yes.
Right. With a parami, with a EMT.
Paramedic, yeah.
Fire, paramedic, and police EMT, all of our police officers are EMTs.
So then you got your key, you need a two.
Right.
I'm good.
I'm good with that.
And we have, we have, apparently we have a, a month timeframe to make this decision. And we lose the, uh, the sale of it, so that's.
Chief, do you know the exact date that the offer expires?
I, I have the paperwork back on my desk, I don't have it with me tonight.
Do you, do you happen, I mean, is it before the end of this calendar year?
I would have to go back and honestly double-check. I, I know I've had the offer in for probably two or three months now.
Did we declare the squad surplus?
I'm sorry?
No.
No.
Didn't we, I thought we did want?
No, we know the ambulance.
Is the ambulance? Ambulance two was declared surplus.
Not the squad.
Okay, yeah. So before we sell it, I'm not even sure why we had it out for sale if we didn't consider it service, it gave a surplus.
I think the chief was exploring options to see what might be possible.
Yep, that's exactly right.
I suggest that if we're going that way, we should declare it surplus.
No, I know, absolutely, you would have to before you, so.
Maury, did you have something you want to say?
I was gonna say, it's up to you, but I think one possibility would be to call one thing surplus and bring another thing from surplus back to active.
Right, right, right.
Bring the ambulance back to active and declare the pumper sur.
The squad.
Squad, make it surplus and sell it. But.
What is the timeframe for repairing the ambulance two?
Chief, please get more details on that.
Yeah, it was, all, all I was able to get was estimate, just an estimate on a cost for motor replacement and the other costs I was already aware of. But I don't have a timeframe, don't have a commitment, don't have a.
Was that from Coastal Auto Repair? Is that the?
No.
It was from.
No, it was from, it was, I called several different dealers, and most dealers would not put a new motor in the ambulance two.
One on the south shore or something.
They would not do it, like regardless of the, like regardless, regardless of the quote?
Yeah, regardless, they, they wouldn't even quote it. I called two, three, four dealerships, and two of them said that they didn't have a motor and that, that would fit that the way it was supposed to, and they did not want to undertake retrofitting it.
Because it just seems like there's obviously so many Ford dealerships between here and Rodman Ford down in Foxborough, it's just strange.
Yeah, I know, most of them wouldn't even touch it, they didn't even want to have a discussion on it. That E four fifty motor and the ability to work on those short-nosed cabs makes it extremely costly and extremely difficult.
I'm just curious, but was Kelly Ford, was that one of the ones you called around here?
Uh, I called, yes, I called, uh, Kelly, I called Colonial, um, some didn't even call me back.
Well, but, but Kelly was one of the ones that said no, or they didn't call back?
I believe so, either that or they didn't call me back. I talked, I left messages with the service managers and.
We can, we can make sure Kelly Ford gets back to you.
I, I'll double-check, I have the list back in my office as to who I called. And I, and I called some other aftermarket places that deal with vehicle motors and truck motors, independent of Ford dealerships.
No, we're, we're just chugging a little, I think most of us here have a kind of high-level personal contact with someone at Kelly Ford, so.
Who wants the contact?
I'll text them.
I find it hard to believe that they would, they would explore.
I, like, usually, like, when you get work done in your house, there's always that, like, I don't really want to do the work price. Like, you always get a quote, it's just sometimes the quote is.
Yeah, no, they, literally, and, and people are dumping these ambulances left and right just because that was not a good design, not a good motor, and not a good vehicle to work on by Ford. So those E four fifties are all disappearing.
Say it again, Brock, I'm, I'm sorry.
I, it just seems kind of incomprehensible that there's a common vehicle type like the F four fifty that is somehow determined to be unserviceable and unreparable, and nobody will.
It's very hard to believe.
Yeah, I don't get it.
My mechanic friend does.
Well, it, it's a Ford six point O, and all you have to do is mention to a mechanic that you want him to work on a Ford six point O and an E four fifty, and they all but hang up the phone on you. I, I've gotten the, I, I'm not a mechanic, but that's the response I got from everybody. And anybody that was running those ambulances have made sure to get rid of them.
Okay.
Because of that motor.
It's, it's nine fifteen, and, um, where do we want to go at this point?
I, I have one, one question. Given that particular scenario and independent of any staffing changes, have there been discussions with Chief Fitzgerald about? Because it's really dependent upon a police officer being involved.
That has not been part of a staffing plan or any discussion I've had with respect to staffing second ambulances.
Well, let that ride for a month.
If we let it ride for a month, then maybe we can't sell the squad.
No, I'm just saying that the staffing is being discussed on January seventeenth, we don't need to discuss it tonight.
Right, I understand that, I'm just trying to figure out how we, how we can quickly get the level of medical service that we have more or less promised the town. How, and quickly, you know, if, if replacing ambulance, ambulance two can be done in a couple of months, maybe that's okay. But if it's gonna take six months.
Right.
Then I'm not so happy about selling squad two, if we can get that online in a couple of weeks or a month.
Maybe we can list out options, our preference for options, and, and then hopefully the chief can get some quick answers on the timeframe, because I think that's the missing piece to your point, Anne. It's tough for us to make a firm decision without the repair timeframes.
And, and when the offer for the squad car comes in and.
Yeah.
So that's, we need, we, we do need some more information, I, I, I feel.
But could we make a decision pending, you know, give them some boundaries, saying our first pref, for example, our first preference would be to repair the ambulance and sell the squad if it can be repaired in a certain timeframe, or we can't do that?
I, I think to make a proper decision, we need to have the information and make one decision. I'm not comfortable, I don't know about anybody else.
I, I think it makes sense, so to me, the, to me, the two data points in terms of time is number one, ask Rodman Ford when they could replace the engine, since they're the only ones that came back with a quote, obviously we can try to reach out to other dealers, you know. There you go. Um, and then the other timing question is on the adding the, whatever, five grand of equipment, you know, to the squad, right?
Or the, and the expiration of selling.
That's, that's the key date.
And the expiration of the offer.
That's the key date of the choice.
What's these three dates?
I have one more question, though, that, that, Chief, you were saying that if you do the ambulance, uh, fit it out with the, um, upgraded striker stretcher.
Yep.
That it has to be an ALS? Is there any way to repair the ambulance for use as the squad would be without being a transport?
You would have to take the stretcher out, you would have to license it as a non-transporting, and you couldn't transport it.
Well, then maybe we do that in the interim until we figure out what staffing is.
I, I would have to double-check on how that would be able to be licensed to what the different requirements would be for the state of taking an actual ambulance, which would be a transporting ambulance, and making it a classified non-transporting. I, I don't know what, um, OEMS requires for one and for the other, and if you can, if it depends on the style of the vehicle.
I think we need that information as well, because if, I mean, we can't make a decision based upon, um, not actual staffing.
I think we can, I think we can, yes.
You think so?
Yes.
Well, under the concept of just having a backup ambulance.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And preclude the continued conversation about staffing, that we could make a quick decision, to Anne's point, to get something operational fast.
Correct, yep, okay.
Otherwise, I think.
Could I, could I ask a question? Ju- just because we haven't gone down this road before with new apparatus purchases, but with respect to having, um, an apparatus replacement fund and coming up with industry standards proposals on how much, or when apparatus should be replaced and how much it costs, what is the process of getting that money that's already been put aside for these purposes, approved for these purposes?
Has to go through town meeting. Requires an appropriation by town meeting, requires to be in the budget, it's gotta go through the budget.
Right, but, but I, I, I guess I'm asking what, wh- what presentation or what do you need to know or hear from me that encourages you to free up that money to put it on the town meeting to be voted for in order to get those vehicles replaced?
Put it in your capital plan, chief, that gets approved by the post.
Okay. Fair enough. I just want to learn the mechanism, that's all.
So I think, just to add on to what, um, Greg said, the standards that you refer to, chief, were, I've only heard tonight, timeframes. Those standards probably include other things like mileage, right?
And repair history.
Repair history, I mean, there's other factors besides timeframes, so that would have to be.
Not according to the NFPA, the NFPA.
So maybe, maybe they're not articulating it as a requirement, but they're making an assumption. When they say five-year replacement, they are making an underlying assumption about how many miles are on that ambulance within five years. That's the number I don't have right now.
Yeah, well, that, that, unfortunately, that's how they work, because all our gear and all our equipment is governed the same way on, primarily on, on timeframes.
Understand, because utilization is an important metric, and if it's not explicitly stated, it is an assumption. And when you're, those, those, all those great standards, which are terrific, right? But when you apply them to a tiny organization, not even a small organization, a tiny organization, you gotta dig at least one or two levels deeper to understand the underlying assumptions that those standards are based on. And that's a missing piece of this puzzle, and it's why we're having so many questions and, and why we have this, this conversation.
Five and five might be appropriate for Somerville.
Might be, or Boston, but not Manchester.
There's a lot of roadwork.
Right.
Okay, so I think that.
Could, could we just make a list of what we're asking for? Make, or maybe Greg has a list.
And the action item that we're gonna add to our tracker for, um, the information that is requested, but also by when we expect to get it back and when, which meeting we can review it.
So I would aim for your January third meeting.
Yep, sounds good.
So the three dates, in terms of timeline. The question about could the old ambulance be repaired and licensed as a non-transport ambulance? Those are the four key inf, pieces of information, and then if we could drill down deeper into the standards, what are, what were they, how were they built? What assumptions underline those, those standards that, that, uh, that the PA has, has propagated?
And the three key dates are when the offer?
When the offer expires on the squad, when could the engine?
How long would it take?
When could the old ambulance be put back on the road? And, um, how quickly could squad?
Yep.
The squad be, uh, retrofitted?
Thank you, that's exactly what I want to hear.
Yeah, if, if somebody would be able to record those and email them to me, I would appreciate it, and then I can answer them kind.
No, I'll get them to you.
Great, thank you.
Maybe one more, some is just the theoretical question, if we were to spend that five or seven grand to retro, to equip squad.
Does it impact?
Does it, does it plus, minus, or neutral? Does it have any impact on the offer, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I think one other question is, if the offer goes away, are there other people? I think one other question is, if the offer goes away, are there other people who might line up to purchase a squad?
Excellent question.
Oh, that was.
Presumably, yes.
That guy would also.
Period of.
He might revise his offer based on six months later. I mean, that doesn't have a lot of miles and that's six rights.
Are the brokers the best pathway for such equipment? Strikes me that a broker, that you might just reach out in contact, is gonna give you, it's probably worth a lot more than one seventy-five, I guess that's where I'm thinking.
So it's that same, you know, the age of, but you're trying to sell it yourself, or you go, you're wholesaling.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
Craigslist, yeah. You can take your phone calls.
So this is a broker with the one seventy-five offer?
I, I believe so, right, chief, that was to, uh, a dealer.
Yep.
It's a, it's a nationwide dealer, a new fire apparatus.
Yeah.
So that dealer clearly's got the other side of the transaction already, so how big a spread is that guy, yeah?
It's a lot of money.
Certainly could be.
It's about seventy thousand dollars less than we paid for it in twenty eighteen.
Should sell everything.
Not as bad as I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Going on a business sale.
It's a good market to sell, because people can't get too close to it.
Okay, do we have anything else then to discuss this evening?
You pass those brownies around again?
I have a brownie.
Not hearing any others, uh, do I have a motion from the?
So moved. Moved to adjourn.
Okay, um, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded Brian Solace, we'll call vote Ann Harrison.
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Kathy Blata?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Becky Jakes says yes, that's a wrap.
I have a motion to adjourn from the finance committee, Mike Crack. Two seconds, Andy seconds? We'll go vote, Mike?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Sarah says yes.
Well done, thank you.
Good night, chief.